I think Shauna's is the only one.
I know he's moving into his new building over the weekend, so.
He is?
Yeah. Next to St. Vincent de Paul there.
He's gotta have business over there.
He's got so many scooters and cycles, I guess he'd need a storage place.
I guess we can go, I think we should go ahead and probably start.
Yeah. As promised, we have evaluated the revenues and the expenditures coming out of last year and into this year and soon prepared, I think, a pretty self-explanatory memo, at least I understood it when she presented it to me after we massaged it a little bit. The, we ended up getting a little more sales tax revenue at the end of the year than we thought we were after we adopted the budget. So we had a little more carryover. The fortunate part of that is that that allowed us to not go broke fighting the snow and buying extra salt and some overtime. So, we, we have to make a budget amendment under any circumstances to kind of reflect that difference and then decide kind of where we want to go with amending the budget to kind of refund the transportation line item and then figure out what projects we want to undertake with the limited money that's available. So if you add and subtract the numbers that she's presented you there and we'll answer any questions you have relative to that. We have seventy-eight thousand dollars in the street department budget that we can use for road repairs. Now, we went ahead and refunded the chemical line item sufficient to get the mosquito spraying or weed killer. We're not gonna do the mosquito, the weed killer. And to put some money in for minor repairs on the building that will come up between now and the end of the budget year, because he doesn't just, that building's okay, but we still have a welcome center in this building and there's, things come up. But even after we did that, we ended up with the seventy-eight thousand and if we budget that, then we'll have that ten thousand, seven hundred left in that fund and projected it at the end of the year for carryover. The, this is just the discussion. Whatever decisions we make today will direct us then to prepare the actual budget amendment for our next meeting or one after that, even if you wanted to do any research. The, so this is the draft of the budget resolution. This is what the line items we would change. If we do that at seventy thousand dollars, or the sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollar amendment. And then we gave you the, another copy of the road projects and the ratings that Dave did. Dave, come on, come up here, have a seat. We talked about during the budget period and we decided just to wait until this time to talk about what we're going to do. What you won't see on there is the point-based project. And the reason for that is that in conversation with folks that look over our shoulders on Tiff financing, we can pay for that out of the, out of the Tiff fund. So we still anticipate doing a point base. It just doesn't have to come out of this seventy-eight thousand dollars. And probably a portion of Parkwood. The reason that we can do it is because it's a critical connector to the shopping center, to the Tiff district. It connects two segments of it. Yes, sir.
I have to back up to the memo. The, I guess, I'm not understanding something. The last sentence in the memo, we received forty-one thousand of insurance money and expended eighty-three thousand dollars. I thought that the, all the damage done and repairs done were covered by insurance.
Just that the sixty-two thousand came in at the end of last budget year.
Well, we used eighteen. Oh, that's what it said. Is that correct?
Right. We received the sixty-two thousand in last year's budget and spent eighteen thousand in last year's budget. And then this year, we received the remaining forty-one thousand and spent eighty-three.
So the entire cost of the repair.
Was covered by insurance.
Was covered by, well, less.
Minus the deductible.
The twenty-five hundred dollar deductible.
Okay.
It just came in two budget years, so it makes it a little harder to track.
That's where the confusion is.
And then just for information purposes, you've got the sheet that shows the expenditures from the major budget line items and where we stand today on those line items, which isn't critical to our discussion tonight, but is helpful.
Yeah.
And one of the things that we were discussing is, last year, we received twenty-four thousand some dollars from the special road district. We should receive that again this year. We were gonna kind of sit on that until we developed, you know, more substantial fund balance so we could undertake a major project. Maybe you want to consider going ahead and using that for repairs on Fourth Street. Just because we're in this kind of tight situation and then start accumulating it again in anticipation of doing a larger project down the road.
Since the last time we talked, it went up, the price went up on Fourth Street because it's buckling up more now. Right in front of Ben Winters up there, across from Phil Rogers there. That whole side now is all tore up. And the longer we go, the, you know, the more trash trucks are gonna tear it up and then that curb's getting worse too, so.
Billmore?
No. Fourth Street, that's on top of the hill.
I know.
Right before you get to Billmore.
Oh, right past VFW?
Yep. My buddy Jim Klein, he used to live. And I honestly gotta, I don't know how to fix it without doing the whole thing because if we patch that spot, I've noticed the last couple of days that the other side's getting to, you know, it's gonna get just as bad because it's cracking up.
You mean do the full width of the area, of the bad area?
Yeah, but the whole street's bad. I mean, that's one of them where, what do you do? Where do you start and where do you stop?
Well, forty-eight thousand dollars is not gonna replace the street.
No. I just want to let everybody know that, you know, that we can patch it, but, and then all of a sudden, when all the rest breaks up, I, if we keep patching, then whatever, and that's a bad spot for drainage up there anyway.
You know drainage.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but I gotta tell you.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, you know, most people who present a problem also find, can present a solution.
Money.
I need money.
And you know, and you know what the money is.
I know.
So present a problem that we can fix within the resources available.
I'm just telling you, I can fix with what money we have, but it's, I'm just letting you know that it's gonna tear up. It's gonna, the rest of it's gonna tear up. And I'd say within the next three weeks, there are gonna be a lot more streets bubbling.
It's just a perpetual cycle. You can't fix a problem and you just patch a problem. And it's a big checklist of your old sins we don't have to.
But we don't have it. You're gonna have to fix it. I mean. The reason why I bring this to you is because people's gonna say, how come you didn't do this to them? You know, so that way, we all know that this is what we had to deal with, you know.
Most people's gonna understand our situation, I think, especially because of the terrible winter we had, you know. And that was the main cause of this problem, was the winter and the salt and everything.
Might be a good time for tax or something.
Well, we just, yeah, short of that, we have a set amount of money to spend. We just make sure that we spend it as wisely as possible. And using the, identifying the places and using the best materials and techniques to get our value, I guess, out of distracted as far as we can, but that's short of any new tax revenue, that's it.
So let's talk about technique. Did you investigate or come up with the figures on what we can save using the?
No. Mr. Nelson was supposed to give me all that information today and he failed to do that. I brought up Martin about, I know we brought it up before about that DuraPatcher. I can't really say right now if it's gonna save us any money or not, but I can guarantee we can get more done faster, you know, than us having to send somebody over to Elvins, get a load of asphalt. Some type, on a good day, it's an hour and a half to go over and back. But now that everybody's gonna be patching, it might be two hours, it might be three hours for somebody gets back.
Where do you go to get asphalt?
Elvins.
Where's that at?
Over on the other side of Flat River.
Park Hill. Oh, and blood belt materials.
Blood belt materials, yeah.
Yeah. How about Festus, Weber Festus?
Their stuff is a coarser stuff and it gets cold on us before we get, but, you know, we lose almost half of it by the time we get it off the truck by shelving it. You know, they don't have the real fine stuff for the real thin holes that we have. Their coal mix is a little different.
What's that Easy Street product that Weber sells?
That's bag stuff.
No, they have that in bulk too, that they do it to the south port.
The information that Carl gave me one time was the bags, but you can also buy it in bulk, but it's the same stuff that we get in bags from what I checked out. And then we had to get it, and I called up the south and they said we had to go up north to get it. Unless that, you know, that was a couple of years ago, so they might have it now.
I don't know. I just, I've seen it. I've seen it there and it has a big sign that says Easy Street paving on it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the, kind of the bag stuff that we use, you know. We don't use, we use a different brand, but.
Well, that one's set up.
Yeah, the bag stuff sets up. It sets up real good, but it's expensive. But, you know, that's the reason why we get it and what.
Well, it's in bulk. Won't set up on the truckload if it's in bulk.
It'll last a while, but like I said, where do I store it? You know, we had it once before years ago down at the old shop in the Quonset, but then it got so hard that we had to take tobacco to break it up.
All right. Then it wasn't any good.
When we figure our costs on things like that, we take into account our man-hours, fuel, cost of insurance and vehicle costs for the day. I mean, how, how far down do we drill down to get an actual, our real true cost is compared to having somebody else do it? Are we factoring in everything that is really a cost to the city?
Nope, but we can, if that's what you want.
Well, no, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
The DuraPatch is just a piece of equipment we rent. Our personnel do it.
Yeah.
Well, we saw it demonstrated.
Yeah, they've demonstrated it a couple of times. And it's slick, it's just, you know, it's expensive.
It works pretty good.
And we haven't done it because frankly, we weren't convinced that doing it realized a substantial savings. And that's the kind of answer we were looking for today and we didn't get it.
So, now, I did hear from, I did talk to Gary Nelson myself.
Okay.
And he did, he did highly recommend it, that the county leases one for a couple of months out of the year.
Yeah.
And they are very pleased with the results that they get out of it, that you could do, you can build up, as we've seen in that demonstration, I don't know how many of you guys, and John, you run a Ford, where? That you can build up a pothole or if you have just spider webbing that you can.
Just some balloon and stuff?
Yeah. You can do, you can do a thin patch.
Yeah, it's got a air with it. You blow the holes out and then you spray the oil, then you put the rock on and then you walk away from it. It's, you can drive on it immediately.
So is this, is there a company that we're renting this from and would they have a representative to come and give us? I mean, I'm not an expert and I don't know that I'm qualified inside.
They've done it twice now.
Okay.
Once before I got here and one since I've been here.
So, I'm gonna listen to what you guys have to say. It's the right thing, it's the right thing? I don't really care about it.
You called, it's.
You can look it up on the computer, it's a DuraPatcher and they got a video of it.
Yeah, what's the rental rate?
Uh, I think it's five thousand dollars. And that's what Gary's supposed to give me, the price of the oil and the rock, so, but the thing is, we'll have to have, if I talk to salesmen, it'll cost five hundred dollars, we have to have a latch button on one of our tailgates for the rock to go in. It's, with a three and four man crew that we have, I think we can get a lot more done faster. With that, you know, especially like a main street where it just took the top layer off, that's where that's far, you know. Yeah, you can also fill up to five, six inches thick if you want, but.
Well, doing it more faster is nice than, unless it costs three times as much.
We got, we have to understand, you know, our actual, our total and complete cost, not just the cost of the equipment and the materials. And that way, we make the best decision, that's my only point.
We can level that out too, don't you, into use like that?
You can, but if you, once you learn how to do it, you don't have to.
Right.
I talked to Martin and no matter what way you look at this, we could take, you could take all of the things and say that you technically don't need, that people would expect out of the city, that you could, believe I'm not advocating to do this, but you could eliminate channels, you can eliminate your funding to Channel Seven and gain fifteen thousand dollars. You could, you could close the welcome center and get rid of that whole staff and eliminate any involvement in tourism and you could save hundred, fifty?
Hundred fifty.
Probably hundred fifty. And you could, you could go back to everybody's budget and say you gotta cut another 10%, which I don't know that you could do that. I think it's, most of them are pretty well down to the essentials of what they need just to be able to operate everyday operations. But even at that, you gain less than probably two hundred thousand dollars. And what's that gonna get you when it comes to trying to do a street? I think that was part of our conversation last year during the budget planning process, was looking at if we slashed everything, we still don't get very much at the end of the day by doing that, in relative to what it costs. So, and I asked Martin to, and I know he's talked about and investigated what Perryville's, what are the options, or the option that Perryville uses. And when we talked today, he says, well, you know, and he said before, that we've got that option here to do if we want to do it. It isn't a popular, certainly I don't think would be a popular decision, but again, I don't know how you're gonna come up with any kind of money short of the people paying for it. And if it's gonna be a, do you go out there for a bond issue or an increase in taxes or do you do something like this where the people end up sharing in the costs of the improvements? Wherever you're gonna get there, I mean, we could spend five million dollars tomorrow on the streets and still not be caught up real easily.
This is excerpt from the code that describes the process that Perryville uses. This is our code, not Perryville's code. And they went to court, they were the first city to do this and it was the court that went all the way to screen board. And the courts have ruled that this is an option that's available to cities of our size.
Well, I'll tell you, I read that. And I'd like you to tell me what it says.
What it says is that you can take a street or a section of street and you can make the improvements to that street and you can, on a prorated basis, however you choose to do it, by a property owner, by road frontage, usually it's road frontage, you can assess on a prorated basis, the amortized cost, that's amortized cost, on the property owners who benefit, and put it on their tax bill. So if you spend, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, you get 10 property owners, then you made $10,000 per property owner worth of improvements and you're gonna amortize it over 10 years, you know, they would get a thousand dollars a year assessment.
Yeah.
Didn't it go by the road frontage as part of how they?
It has to be an equitable way. Most people think road frontage is the best way to do it.
I joined Melissa on that deal. I don't want to have to pay for my street when I see other people that don't live on my street driving down my street, utilizing what I paid for. And I think that would be a very shared opinion.
Perryville said it was, it was very controversial, people objected to it. Now they have a waiting list of people who want their street stuff.
Yeah, that's.
And they'll pay.
Yeah. And you gotta admit, if you've been at Perryville and driven on their streets, it's pretty nice. But it. Then I'd be standing on, out in Seraphin Street waving John down and making him pay me five bucks every time I go over the record to cut over to his business. I don't see that would be.
You'd get a bite.
But that wouldn't, that, I don't, I don't know, I don't like that at all. I'll be happy to listen to all the people in Ward One and hear what they have to say about that. Oh, it's, it's, like I say, it's not gonna be a popular decision.
And there are no grants just for a street. You can tie it to economic development, like, you know, you can say, this project's going on, it's gonna create this many jobs and we need to improve this street in order to support that project. And we've got Delta Regional and places we can go to get, to get assistance, but you're not gonna just get a grant, at least, we're not gonna get a grant, to just repair our streets. Now, if you live in the St. Louis metropolitan area, they do have a STIF program that comes through East West Gateway where the cities are fixing their streets, but we're not there and we don't get it.
So what are our options? How do we move forward to debate our options and then what do we have to do to try to put an option in play from a taxing standpoint? I don't want to pay more taxes, nobody does. I would like to have better streets, everybody does. So does it, is it a referendum that we've put on a ballot? How do we, whether it's a bond or what are the mechanisms in place that we have as options?
Well, we can't pass a street tax because we've already got one. And you can't double up on your, on your transportation tax. So it'd have to be a general revenue tax increase or a bond issue. A bond issue would be for specific projects. You'd have to set the priorities and choose the projects and certainly we would come up with an analysis, but you know, you're gonna end up having a bond issue that everybody's gonna pay for and it's only gonna fix, create some people benefit from. It's kind of the same reverse.
Yeah, but I'm not getting an extra thousand dollars on my tax bill that I have to pay at one time, you know, over time. I mean, the sales tax or whatever other.
Sales tax. At the beginning, did you?
No. I guess what I, I guess where I'm really driving towards is.
I don't think you can pass another sales tax. You got a sales tax.
What mechanism would allow us to put this in front of the voters and let them decide? Because I mean, that's, that's what should decide. Everybody wants to, wants better streets, we all do. But somebody's gotta pay for them. Do you want them bad enough to pay for them and ask people and give them a chance to vote on it and, and it's more or less, it's a, look, here is our chance, it passed, we're gonna do these projects. It didn't pass, we're gonna do what we can as we have in the past, but don't think that magically more money's gonna appear to fix our streets. It's almost a kind of a, I hate to say put up or shut up, but it is. I mean, it's, if you don't want to pay more, don't keep griping about we want better streets. We all want better streets, but we've gotta pay. Well, we've always said that we can't, we've never, in the last several years, we can't keep up with them deteriorating the way they deteriorate. It's certainly unfortunate that this winter took an extra toll on them that makes it very obvious. So I, you know, maybe if it was on April's ballot right now, that it might have a whole lot easier chance of surviving, but obviously we can't catch that one, but. But I mean, this, to me, this is, it's the same exact question of, we want a swimming pool. Everybody wants a swimming pool. We don't have a way to pay for it. If you want to pay more taxes, we can build a swimming pool. If you don't want to make, pay more taxes, quit telling us that you want a swimming pool. Because we all agree, we all want better streets, we all want a swimming pool, we all want a lot of different things. But if people aren't willing to pay for it, then we don't have the money to spend. So to me, that's where, that's where the issue is. It's not so much about, it's just, listen, these are the options.
We've got two issues. Well, one is the immediate issue and that is, you know, we need to start doing something next week.
Make a decision, do your things best and move forward.
Then, we need to craft a more permanent solution to the problem, which, you know, we looked at kind of last year when we were having the discussion, we thought and discovered we couldn't just do another transportation tax. How we could, could put it together so that the voters have the assurance that the money that is raised goes to streets is kind of the question. And that's something I'll have to look into.
Well, short term, I think if you guys are familiar with the system that Dave's talking about, figure out what it costs to do it for a timeframe or however you rent the equipment, because it's a gamble. No difference in the gamble we made with the guys that were supposed to do the.
Slurry seal.
Slurry seal, right? That hasn't paid off for us very well. Hopefully it will, they will finish that job. But anytime you try something new, there's a little risk there. So don't, don't go, you know, jumping over our heads, but whatever we could do on a, like a one month or whatever turn, whatever turn you can get, understanding there's some risk there, we just have to wait till it works out. And where else have they done it? And talk to those people, get testimonials from them, if they're happy.
You know, the county uses it for the last two or three years. And he's been, like Martin said, he's been here twice and demonstrated it. And it's, I don't, Park Drive where they did it, it's still holding up. And that was a good four inches thick there.
You know, it's a cost benefit question. You know, I know, like the mayor says, you know, Gary Nelson's been promoting it, not because he gets anything out of it, just because he thinks it, it works well. And last year, he was saying, you ought to do that. We do it and you ought to do it. And the guy was there.
He also told me that they're thinking about putting a tank out there, an oil tank out at their place, at county, and then we can buy from them, we wouldn't have to, which we can go to Farmington and buy instead of going all the way to St. Louis and buy. Because when he first brought it up, I'm like, you know, there's no way we can, this is gonna come out, we gotta drive all the way to St. Louis to get all. But they got one in Farmington that they'll sell, they'll sell us to all there, so we'd have to go to Farmington. But also, he said that Crown or Nobie or whoever's talking about putting a tank there. So that way, then we can get the rock from Tyra Rock, so it's a lot closer than going all the way over Elvins. The only reason why I'm bringing this up is because like I said, for every street that, I mean, that's bad, I'm thinking this will help us get quite a bit of it done faster because we're gonna be spending a lot of time on Fourth Street. We're gonna be spending a lot of time on different streets that, them are just gonna get worse. I mean, I only have, you know, a four man crew, so I can't, we can't be in two different places at one time.
I think that what you just said there though, and obviously we're not gonna go out buy one, but we could maybe say lease one for so many months, but with the county doing it and us doing it, maybe Nobie would be receptive to putting in, where you didn't have to even drive all the way to Farmington, where we both could go there and get the stuff.
One of the things with this machine too is that you keep it plugged in at night. So even, you know, chilly mornings, we could be out right away instead of waiting, you know. I mean, is it gonna save money? I don't know. I'm just thinking to try to get done as fast as we can.
Same time. Just a shame that the streets, like you said, don't have a base underneath them.
Exactly, that's what, you know. Well, you look at progress markways. We've sealed them cracks down the middle three different times already. It's already opened as wide. Hope Metals this year, I mean, they'd open wide. Pam called me, you know, it was a lot of snow on the ground. I took the spray foam, we went up there and we put spray foam in it just because it was starting to melt and didn't want it to get underneath there and pop it up, because it's a fairly new street. But, you know, I had to do something, so we used some spray foam on it.
What kind of options do we have to have a contractor come in, take care of a certain area? I mean, if we're looking at cost benefit analysis to determine what can we do, what can you and your guys base on everything else you already have to do? What could you actually do in a month or some set timeframe? And figure, not just how much, I mean, how many streets are you gonna get done? Right? This is the math of what we're gonna get done in this first month and then have petition to get bids from a contractor to come in and do the same thing. to give bids from a contractor to come in and do the same thing. So we have a better understanding that we're spending our money right. And that also sets a goal that we have to keep to make sure we get that much out of it. If we're paying for this thing every day, because you know, things are gonna come up.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
That was my next thing.
We're gonna get pulled off for a variety of reasons.
Without writing kind of bid specs.
No, pretty simple. Here's, I'm, I'm gonna do this street, this far, these streets.
What, what are you gonna do to it?
I'm gonna patch the potholes. Come and tell me how much it'll cost for you to come and patch a pothole.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's how you're gonna patch them, is the question.
Well, you're the expert, you're gonna tell me.
Well, that's the spec you would write.
Well, you know, I.
Otherwise, you're not gonna get, you're gonna be getting apples and oranges. Now, if you.
Have our engineer write a spec for patching potholes. I, I just, that doesn't seem like that much of a hurdle to stop the health process, the thought process, and we should understand what it really costs to do this.
It's, it's, it's a bigger hurdle, I think, than your, it, the spalling that you see, where the, you know, first layer came off, that's, that's one kind of patch.
Yeah, I would think a contractor would tell you that, I gotta cut that hole out.
The next kind of patch is the one where you have to excavate.
Well.
And, and, and I, you'd have to pretty much say, fix this one, and this one, and this one, and this one, and give them fifty or a hundred, or whatever you have any got.
There's your answer.
And then tell them what they're gonna do with each one in order to get a bid. Now, you might get somebody who's wanting to come, gonna give you an order of magnitude estimate.
I understand and recognize what you're saying, Martin. I guess what I'm saying is, for us, how do we know we're doing the right thing? And, and one test is to have other bids to do what we're gonna do. Uh, and if we can't determine a metric to, to develop a proposal by, then I guess that we just can't.
Well, you can't. It's just gonna be more detailed. You know, it, you're not gonna get anyone who comes in except who'll give you kind of a time and material bid, unless you tell them the scope of the work. And then they notice they've got, you know, X number of cubic yards of material and X amount of labor and.
How about, how about a time and material bid to, um, run this operation?
That we could do.
You guys, what's it called?
Duracell with a brand name, there's probably other, other equipment.
I mean, because there would be times, I think, when Dave's guys, who knows what's gonna come up, and, and they're, we're.
That, that's, that's easily doable.
Well, going into lawn mowing, too.
Yep.
I mean, that's the only thing I'm looking, that's a, is there a company out there that does strictly duripatch stuff? I mean, I'm just asking.
The company that, that demonstrated it said, we can do it, we can render it or they'll do it.
That's how it's wondering.
Yeah.
So how much do they charge?
I would have to get investigated, cause.
That's what you're talking about.
Warn the market.
To see what they would charge versus what, I don't, I mean, you're all gonna have.
Just, just.
And frankly, it, it, it's probably more efficient for them to do it, because they do it all over, they know exactly what they're doing, than we have training time and lead time and, you know, to, uh, okay, we'll, we'll get that figured.
Do, do we want to, do you wanna spend the forty-eight, fifty thousand dollars that we were trying to accumulate from the special road district? Do you wanna, do you want, obviously, we can spend it real easily on 4th Street, somewhere on 4th Street. North Fourth easily. And the other question is, you got.
Oh, God, yeah.
You're still sitting on, if you want to, I, I don't know if you wanna consider what we've been through this winter as an emergency, you, you got four hundred thousand dollars, and you're gonna spend the seventy-eight thousand of it, basically.
I think I would be real interested to see if this duripatch, whether we do it or we have someone else do it, whatever our best thought process is there to, to see what gets done in a month or even two months, whatever a reasonable timeframe is. And try to understand how happy everybody's gonna be with that. And if that's the case, then I think we have another discussion about, okay, look, this, if, if it works really well, I think it'll be worth visiting again and say, okay, look, this is, uh, we keep this thing three more months and we just go like crazy, and we're gonna be way far ahead, but it's gonna cost us this much money. I'd like to see, I'd like to see, I mean, we, I don't know, I don't wanna use the word do, but, um, the slurry still hasn't worked out like we hoped. The company has certainly not worked out like we hoped. Uh, I would really like to get a test drive here before we go on to something else.
I talked to the guy, actually, this week, Monday, and he's just planning on coming down to redo it. He said he's never had problems like this anywhere.
Yeah, what day is he coming?
What day is he coming?
And I'm not putting you on the spot, Dave, I mean, and honestly.
You'd like, you'd like to see it? You wanna see it, what you're saying?
No, I wanna know what day he's coming to, to Slurry still people are coming to fix this.
Oh, I don't.
Yeah, that's the kind of commitment I have to give my customers.
Well, he, he said he's waiting for the weather to break, and when he does, he's gonna do it during the day, so then I was gonna bring that up to you. Everything's gonna have to be shut down.
After April, the weather's gonna be broke, so if he wants to schedule us, I'd encourage him to go ahead and put us on the calendar.
Well, but he's gotta have temperatures over fifty.
April or May.
Yeah, so he'll have to wait, you're right, another thirty days away.
Then he's coming back.
I think, I've got it written.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
I, I know, and I know.
I have as much as I can get from it.
And I know, and, and I'm, I tend to kind of give the contractor the benefit of the doubt that he says he's gonna come back and fix it, but, um, man, I'm not getting off that easy with my customers, so they wanna know what day I'm coming, and what time I'm gonna be there, how many people I'm bringing, what day I'm gonna be done. Uh, we should, I don't know, put a little more pressure on them to, uh, let them know that.
I, I think though, the warmer's better.
Yeah, we don't wanna do it right now.
That's, that's the reason why that, that's not sticking, ain't nobody.
I'm not encouraging it, right?
It's too cold.
At all. I just wanna.
It's too cold.
But I don't think we wanna go like Perryville.
Well, it's their fault, they did it when it's.
Make the people's fault, before that street paid for it, because Portis didn't have to pay for it, did they?
No.
It'd be tough to.
It's not gonna be a popular, it wouldn't be a popular decision.
The mayor said, if we don't wanna be Alderman and Ameri, you're gonna do it. Cause we'll be out.
I think they own that one. Mark, is there, is there any way you can rough out a time and materials? Rough both, the city doing it and a contractor, this guy, whoever you're talking, rough it and we could have a work session some night to where we can sit and talk about it forever, but if we don't have a kind of a.
I don't do the work session, I just, uh, when, I was concerned with this, when you put your numbers against something, Dave, to, to compare it to anything else, just stick your, you guys, whatever your number is for man hour, uh, an average across your employee base per man hour, and that, and.
I was going to do that, Tom, but I didn't get the information from, from, uh, Mr. Nelson today.
I'm not beating you up at all. I'm just, I know in the past, that's also been an issue.
Yes.
When I've asked, well, what, what about our costs? Well, I don't, I don't put that in there. I think we should start putting that in there, so we really know what it costs us to do it. And really, it's almost that you have to double it, your labor number, cause if your guys are out doing paving, they're not out doing their other job.
Oh, yeah.
So you kinda gotta look, I was looking at it as.
Yeah, it's very dangerous, lots of, eh, public managers take the position wrongly, in my opinion. Well, I'm paying them anyway, so I don't count their labor when I'm figuring out what it costs to do something, and that's not right.
Yeah, my guys are doing something like paving, they're not doing what they should've been doing, so I gotta look at that as twice the cost. And that really plays a factor when you start looking at hiring outside contractors.
I understand, but we bounce around so much.
Well, and we have to, you have to have that flexibility to serve the citizens.
So we're, we're, I think, decided that we're gonna hook, go, use the funds that are available from the special road district and dedicate those to the street that we're committed to on them, and that's 4th Street. And, and now.
Did we dislanguish? Did we dislanguish? The special road.
It had to connect to.
No, but we can use it at any time when we.
Oh, yeah, no, it's ours when we get it. Uh, we asked them for permission to not spend it in the year we got it.
Mm-hmm.
And they, they agreed to that.
I think that's good. But that's gotta be down up there, North Fourth.
Okay. And then, uh, and then we'll do whatever else we can get done with the funds that are available to us from that source, on 4th Street.
On 4th.
Then we're gonna contact the Duracell, and we're gonna find out, uh, the cost for them to do it, and we're gonna calculate the cost for us to do it, including labor and material and, and everything else, truck time, fuel, and we'll come back to you with that information.
And Tom, I mean, and they would line out their work schedule, I mean, as far as where to go, where to start, what areas.
Well, yeah, we, we can, we can do that.
Yeah.
I mean, probably give you a break if you got several streets for them to do there, but.
And, and, and I don't think we, I can just.
The situation isn't getting any better either, though.
Like everyone else.
I can include that information just in my citizen.
And it all goes back to the base there.
City administrator's report in our next meeting, unless you wanna have another work session before the next meeting.
Or email us.
I can email it to you before you have before.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
All right, next, next. Um, you have in front of you a, a news item from Sun Times having to do with Charter, uh, upgrading their system, uh, and not doing Perryville or, or St. Genevieve, and, and other communities and where, where they serve, but Sun Times is most concerned with that. The city of Perryville approached Charter and said, we'd like for you to upgrade Perryville. And, and so Charter took another look at it and agreed to do it. Same option is available to us if you'd like to try and do it. Uh, the only reason I'm bringing it to you, and it's kind of in a work session, it didn't free. It's free to the city, but the citizens now have to pay higher fees, they've gotta get the digital box, they've gotta rent it, it's a monthly rent, and I've heard some who said, please don't do it, because I'm on fixed incomes and I don't want the additional expense. If we ask them to do it, and they agree to do it, everybody who subscribes will get the additional fee, it won't be an option. Convert the whole system or, or, or they won't. And what you get, in terms of services, is kind of spelled out in this, uh, but, you know, you, you get high speed internet, you get, uh, a number of HD TV channels that you don't concurrently have, two hundred of them, uh, it, it, that's, those are the ba, the basically, the basic benefits that you would get from it. It's not a major decision, but.
It seems to me those, those options are available to everybody today, uh, not maybe through Charter.
Not through Charter.
But through other providers, satellite in particularly, um, and for the city to, to force everyone to pay more for their cable when they didn't wanna pay more for their cable, because if they wanted those services, it's out there in the marketplace, that makes any sense at all to me. I was just on the phone with Charter today, asking them to convince me that I shouldn't switch to satellite TV.
Did they?
They gave me fifty more channels to reduce my bill by ten bucks a month.
For now.
Because I called and, and, and fussed about it. But I don't know, this, if you want those things, I think, isn't that available, I mean, I get.
Not to Charter subscribers.
Not to Charter subscribers, but if you chose not to be a Charter subscriber, you could get those features.
You know, we are supporters of community television, which depends on Charter members subscribing. Uh, so one of the questions you might ask is, is it in our interest to preserve or create as many subscribers as we, as we can to support our community television station?
If, I guess if, if they don't do this, is our subscriptions going to continue to go down?
Based on my service charter, I have hardly any reason to keep them. And if I got HD TV, it wouldn't give me very many more reasons to keep them. But that's just my personal reason. So how do you gauge, uh, what, um, the citizens of St. Genevieve want?
I, I, I can't, and I don't think, it's just kind of those public policy questions. I know some have said, don't increase my fees.
I think I'd just keep the city out of my cable TV. That's my, my stand on it.
But we're not gonna get in the business, we would just send the letter saying, please reconsider.
The people at this table might make my bill go up. I wouldn't like that.
If I wrote the letter and the bill went up, yeah. Okay, anybody?
That's just me.
You watch Channel Two at night?
Yeah.
I can't.
Why?
Just blur to check.
Call them up?
Well, I haven't. They're blaming on my cable. I said, why are you like that all the time?
John, what, what do you think?
I don't have trouble.
It's a double edged sword, and I hear everybody complaining it's switching addition, all of them, they start up in the price there. So it's about like, switching to a different insurance company, it's cheap for a little bit, and then they start going up, so I don't know, I mean, I mean, I know a few people that's so irate, they went back to a Redwood TV antenna.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't get a real sense of, uh, there's a groundswell here to, to get involved in the television, so we'll just, uh, consider that, uh, an issue that we're not gonna pursue.
I, I guess we can wait and see what the pressure that we get.
Get the full board here and let it get out on, I mean, the only people that are gonna see our meeting, unless they watch our YouTube.
People who subscribe.
Will be the subscribers to Charter Cable.
See how they react.
So, you know, maybe we will get some feedback there, and the phones will ring off.
Put something in the paper there, but if you have an hour, you're willing to, the price to go up there to kind of get some feedback.
Well, would you like for me, when we go to the regular meeting, more people, I'll bring it up under my, my report, and I'll say, here's an option, we won't really discuss it anymore, I'll just say, and, and it, and suggest that those who are watching express their opinions.
Excellent. I think those that have computers would probably want it because of faster connection and everything, but not everybody.
You know, we have areas that are served by AT&amp;T, U-verse. I, I don't know exactly, but some people have it.
We got AT&amp;T, but I'm not sure it's U-verse.
It is, mine is.
We got Char, and, uh, it works, it works okay.
I just had to call AT&amp;T about, uh, a phone line, and they had, my internet connection, actually, I don't have a phone line. They asked me if I had U-verse, I said, heck, I don't know. And they, they looked at it and told me that I did, and I said, what does that do for me? And they said, well, nothing, cause you just have the internet, so we don't really offer everything in your area.
Oh, really? You can't bundle your phone and internet and TV?
I didn't, I didn't look into it, I just.
They told me the TV, you couldn't get the U-verse on TV.
No, not TV, just phone and internet. Some people are here for their lives.
So we had, we had trouble with ours, didn't have a dial tone, couldn't, we took up the computer, called AT&amp;T, we ran down his clock there by 4th Street, they had worked on it, took him about three, four tries, and he came back, fixed it, now when the phone rings, it tells us who, who's calling, which we never had that before.
My, my, my internet connection issue, uh, the local AT&amp;T service guy came into My, my internet connection issue, the local AT&amp;T service guy came into my house and I thought he went way out of his way to help me. He was fast and polite and I was really happy.
Yeah, we were happy with the time.
So I might have this number.
Martin, back to that street, you know, like what Perryville's got and stuff. Is there any way we can put that on the water bill as a survey?
What do you mean about the?
About the bond issue and stuff or whatever, whichever way they want to know. Just kind of put it on the, on the water bill?
You know, we got, we only have so many characters we can put on the bottom of the water bill. I don't know that we could adequately explain it. But I'll look into it, see if I can come up with something that might work.
All right, you want to take five?
Yeah.
Have you heard anything?
No.
Designed to get local input on, on, on projects. Um, and, and, and frankly, uh, the, the local meetings aren't very productive. Because the, they basically lay out everything for the people who attend, which was people who already knew about it. Uh, and, and, and they ask you to make recommendations to the Transportation Advisory Council, the PAC, uh, which we, we have representation on, and the county does, uh, through C-MO, Regional Planning, and we go to those meetings. So ultimately, the PAC's gonna set the priorities for the region. I've reported to you that we've been through that process a couple of times. And, and the highest priority for, for the southeast region in their planning commission is the, uh, is the Newburgh Report. So, uh, St. Genevieve probably will be well represented in, in that. The, um, Brenda has received, uh, responses to the RFQs for the inspection services on the trail project. Uh, that evaluation will occur. Uh, we will report to, they, they require that, that these things be independently evaluated, uh, on an objective, kind of measurable evaluation basis. Uh, so, we're gonna prepare a grid. Al will do one, Brenda will do one. Uh, we might ask someone else familiar with engineering, like Steve, to do another one. Uh, and then we submit it to the state to show them that we were unbiased and objective in our selection process. This is just for inspection services. Uh, the, the funding source, it requires that you have an engineer onsite while the project is ongoing, even one that is not technically complicated, like this one. Keeping a log, and recording the weather, and doing all this stuff that engineers do when a construction project is underway. So, uh, that's, that's what this, this particular proposal is. Uh, and then we went to the Tourism Advisory Council meeting. Um, you, you may have noted from the, uh, the, Sandra reported a decline in our visitors, which I think nobody's surprised to hear. Uh, likewise, you may have noticed the report that our sales tax revenues are down a little bit. Uh, although we're still, kind of, up for the year, we're down for the period. Uh, hopefully, we'll, when the weather turns, we will rebound and, uh, at least hit our, our revenue projection goals for the budget, uh, if, if not exceed them. Finally, um, there was a, a news story last month, month before last, that Charter Cable is making a transition to digital service in many of the markets they serve. Uh, they serve St. Genevieve. They're not the only provider for television in St. Genevieve, but they do serve St. Genevieve. And, and they announced that in some smaller markets, they were not gonna make this transition to, to digital. Uh, we're aware that, that some communities have approached them and asked them to reconsider, and they have, and they are making the transition. What it, what it means is that customers for Charter, just for Charter, uh, could be converted to digital signals and receive 200 HDTV channels and a higher-speed broadband internet, but it, it comes with a, with a fee. So, the, the, the cost, and I'm not sure what the additional cost is, but it, uh, I think it's a, was an $11 increase. Uh, the cost is borne by the customers, who then get a digital converter and start receiving this additional service through, through Charter. Um, I have heard, I think we all kind of anticipate, that that would kind of be a mixed blessing or curse for the city. Uh, you'd get these additional channels, you'd get high-speed internet through Charter, but you'd pay an additional fee for that. Uh, we could send a letter, we, the city, on behalf of the citizens, uh, asking Charter to reconsider. Uh, right now, there's no kind of groundswell for that, because, even though people may have been aware of it from the Sun Times and the reports on, on television. Uh, but should we hear from sufficient citizens that they would like for us to have Charter reconsider, the mayor could send a letter to Charter, and we could ask them to do that. So, for those of you who are watching this on television right now, you're Charter subscribers. Uh, if that is something you would like for the city to inquire about and, and see if the change could be made for St. Genevieve, uh, call Martin Toma at City Hall and leave a message. If you can't get me, or talk to me directly, and, and if we get enough people who wanna do it, we'll bring it up and, and pursue it. Uh, if we do not get a groundswell of, uh, public support, then we'll, uh, leave Charter alone to do whatever they do.
Or call the aldermen.
Call your alderman, if you want, talk to them about it. Want to mention the road? Had to road it up there. Challenger. Road. I didn't know what road it was. Uh, another item to report, which I kind of hand-wrote on my notes and forgot to bring up during the work session. Uh, Challenger Field, the, the open access ball field that, uh, is being built up by the community center. Um, they broke ground today. Uh, and, and they approached the city about the access road that they will need to, to get cars up there and, and parking. Uh, on the parcel adjacent to their property is a road right-of-way that was held out of the plat to provide a road that would go up to a future water tower site, kind of behind the community center. Uh, they asked about, uh, if, if they could use that roadway to, uh, or that, that strip to, to construct their road. Uh, it's not a road that we need today, but I kind of took the position that if you wanna use that property without expense to the city, uh, and build the road to benefit you, it certainly, in the future, might benefit the city, and that would be a, a, a advantageous thing for both of us. Uh, and, and, and so, it doesn't require any formal action, really, but I just wanted to kind of inform you and see if you had any comment in support of, or against that proposal.
They're gonna pave it?
They're gonna, well, yeah.
Maintain eventually.
And they're gonna maintain it.
They're gonna maintain it, or they're gonna come and say?
They're gonna maintain it up to the ball, the interest of the ball field. Now, if we end up putting a tower up there, we'll have to extend it.
Most of it would end up being for us would be a, an access road to the water tank. So, I mean, it's not like a street, it's just a, oh, whenever you need to get to the water tank, that's what it'd be there for. But it, it works out good with their plan to get to a parking lot, because the field is actually on the very far corner of the property, and it, it actually saves some property and gets, it works out well for them, and it actually works out really good for us.
What I anticipate is we draft up a memorandum of understanding. It's a simple, we give you permission, you maintain the road, and we stick it in the file and, and move on.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Questions, anybody? Okay, uh, at this time, we will... There we are, okay. At this time, at being 7:14, we will open a public hearing. The Mayor and Board of Alderman and the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri will hold a public hearing to consider the request from Jeff and Sheila Wilk and Peter Harnish for a special use permit that will allow a welding, fabricating, and machine shop to operate at 353 St. Genevieve Drive, located in a C1 general commercial district. Okay, great.
He's in the breast of working.
Okay.
But he said if he had questions, I could call him and put him on speaker, unless you wanted to reschedule him.
No, hopefully not.
Okay.
Would you just give us your name?
Latricia Harnish, I'm Pete's wife.
Okay, thank you. Said you've got in your packet, uh, you can see that wants to plan and zoning. Came away with a positive recommendation for planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor, this came to plan zoning. All the, uh, questions that the planning zoning commission had were answered satisfactorily, and I believe it came out with a unanimous approval.
Does anybody, uh, since this is a public hearing, everybody has a right to speak, address the board with any of their comments?
I'm elected as public.
Sure.
As Alderman Couch said, that this was an unanimous vote in favor, and the city staff also recommended approval for the permit with a condition that, um, that is laid out in the, um, special use regulations in the zoning code. Uh, there are conditions for an I-1 industrial use and a C-1 commercial district. Um, I would strongly encourage stipulation that there be a buffer zone between the residence area and the business itself, um, for security purposes, um, as well as public safety. Um, that's... I'm sorry. Um, a buffer can be a fence and/or vegetation. Um, I think, um, a fence would probably be better for, uh, public safety. And that's all I had to recommend.
My recollection was there was gonna be a fence. That's not...
That's what we decided on at the last meeting.
Right.
They gave us, I think it was, what did you say, six months?
Yeah, you had some time to do it, but I mean, that was part of it.
Cause it's not open yet, it's just...
Yeah, right, but I mean, that was part of it.
Yes, we were aware of that.
Yeah, they knew about the fence.
I think what Brenda's saying is that that is a recommendation from the planning commission, that you adopt that condition.
Well, we already did. I mean, planning and zoning, I already had that. Part of their special use stipulation. Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the last meeting.
Right, from planning and zoning.
And six months, we will have time to get that done?
Is it six months from the date of business opens, or six months? Because it's not gonna be open for a while.
Six months to begin, uh, for a very special use permission.
Even if it's not an opening business?
Well, you can always speak to them about the canceling.
Yeah.
You can always come back if you need more time.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, we'll close the hearing at 7:19. And, um, if somebody wants to make a recommendation, approve it. Sean and Holly, all in favor of approving the special use permit?
Aye.
Proposed?
With the condition.
With the condition.
With the condition.
Yeah.
With the fence, yeah.
Okay, at being, um, 7:19, we will now open another public hearing. The Mayor and Board of Alderman and the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri will hold a public hearing to consider the request from George Weiner for a special use permit that will allow him to continue to operate an auto body repair shop and conduct automotive, automobile sales at 202 North Main Street, an auto body repair shop at 235 North Main Street, and an automobile wrecking site at 331 North Main Street. 202 and 235 North Main are located in a C2 central business district, and 331 North Main Street is located in a C4 neighborhood commercial district. You all have your packets. Yeah, um, George, before, I think, let's let Brenda... Uh, you, you're up here, there, I'm sure, to make, answer any questions anybody's got, so... Brenda, if you would want to address the board?
First, um...
I need to push this, or you figured it out?
You're welcome. Sure. What is this gonna be about? A special use permit. Can I double-click it? Get into the projector.
We had it working today. There it goes.
This is a rather long history, so I made, um, a timeline. Yeah, okay. Um, as you know, this is a special use request for an automobile wrecking service or graveyard at 331 North Main, which is in a C4 commercial zone. And, um, the automobile graveyard is actually allowed in an I-2 industrial zone with special use permit only. And, thank you. 202 North Main Street, uh, for car sales and auto body and repair shop, um, is located in a C2 commercial zone. Car sales are allowed in, uh, C2 as a right of, uh, use. The auto body and repair shop is allowed in an I-1, um, and a C1, C1 and C2 with a special use permit. Yeah, we missed one. Okay, 235 North Main, um, is residential use, but it's in a C2 commercial zone. Um, and they are also wanting an auto body shop, which is an I-1 use. Uh, 235 is the house, 331 North Main's on the other side of the bridge. Am I doing this? Cool, okay. Um, staff recommendation that was made was denial for the request for a special use permit to operate the automobile graveyard, um, at 331 North Main. Uh, denial for the request for a special use permit to operate an auto body repair and restoration business at 235 North Main. And denial for the request of special use permit to operate an auto body repair and restoration business at 202 North Main. Um, but it was also the recommendation to approve the request to operate the car sales at 202 North Main, since it is a used by right. Uh, with the, um, understanding that the building would meet, uh, building code standards. Uh, the basis of staff recommendations were based on what the zoning code recommends, um, and consider the substantiality, um... Oh, I'm sorry, if it was substantially increased traffic hazards or congestion, if it would affect, uh, the character of the surrounding neighborhood, if there would be an increase in fire hazard, if it would adversely affect the community, uh, overtaxed public utilities, or being conflict with the comprehensive plan.
You read tax education, wanted to...
Yes, and, um, I'm going to explain those, whoop, right now. All three properties are located within the St. Genevieve Historic District. 202 North Main Street and 235 North Main are located within the newly formed TIFF District. 331 North Main is adjacent to the TIFF District. 331 North Main is included within the Main Street Unification Project area for the hiking biking trail, which is scheduled for construction this summer. 331 North Main Street is located within a residential district. 331 North Main is located within the flood hazard area and regulated by FEMA regulations. 202 and 235 North Main are located within the St. Genevieve Downtown New World District. 235 North Main is a residential dwelling unit that is adjacent to other residential dwellings, um, including an historic, well-known and respected bed and breakfast. 235 North Main is located next to, um, two significant and historic structures, the LaComte Mill and the Henry Alloy LaComte House on the other side. The LaComte House was part of the HAB study, which led to the designation of St. Genevieve as a national historic landmark back in 1960. Photos and documentation of this house can be found in the Library of Congress. 202 North Main is located next to the Francis Morale Obi-Shawn House, a local landmark constructed in 1806 to 1848, and also next to the Bertha Dodge House, um, circa 1880. 331 North Main Street is located next to the Christian Lukey House and the Wendellin Obermill House. Both of these structures are of German architecture, German vernacular architecture, and were constructed by German immigrants to St. Genevieve. Um, and number three of the, um, things to consider, the proposed use, are an invitation to wildlife in vermin, weeds, and overgrown vegetation, and junk and debris. The potential risk for a fire to spread in surrounding properties is increased with the density of the vegetation covering the properties and with a lack of proper fire suppression and firefighting equipment. Instead of reading this, I'm gonna try to... Something else. There's an increased risk to the general welfare of the community due to the potential risk spread of disease, uh, from the wildlife in the vermin that are there. The risk of spreading surrounding neighborhoods, the risk of spreading to the surrounding neighborhoods, including the loss of historically significant structures, the negative economic impacts resulting from decreased property values in the area, potential loss of commercial businesses on Main Street, resulting in decreased retail sales, resulting in a potential negative impact on the tourism industry. The city's comprehensive plan states that development should be guided so as to minimize the probability of conflicts between non-compatible uses, such as between residential uses versus industrial. Is the city's objective to improve and protect the quality of housing in the community through the continued implementation of the zoning and subdivision regulations and building permits? Encourage the revitalization and improvement of the existing business districts and promote concentrated commercial development only in areas that possess adequate transportation access and have compatible adjacent land uses. The floodplains of North and South Gabory Creeks need to be protected along with the maintenance of the creeks to assure that free flow is not blocked by debris or growth. It's, it was also, oh, sorry. It was also considered to be in conflict with the city's nuisance ordinance for vehicles. Um, it will not support the city's commitment to protect and preserve its historic resources, uh, which the city has made commitments to FEMA and the Corps of Engineers, Department of Natural Resources, and the National Park Service. An automobile graveyard in the downtown district will hinder the efforts that the city has been making to revitalize the flood-ravaged area of North Main Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission at its February 3rd meeting voted to recommend the approval of all three special use permits with no stipulations or conditions to be attached. Um, there were three adjacent property owners that attended the meeting and testified for the applicant, stating that he has always been a good neighbor and that he has maintained his property and kept it tidy. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not offer the basis for its recommendation. And this is the timeline, of course, that I showed you. Um, I'm gonna fast-forward it here. Um, for a brief history, uh, November 1996... Whoop, I wanna back, back up just a little bit. To 1993, there was a request from the applicant to relocate all his vehicles from 331 North Main Street to his home at 235 North Main, due to the flooding in the area. Temporary permission was given by the city by agreement, not by, um, written agreement, but by verbal agreement, to move the cars back when it was able. At that time, 331 North Main Street became vacant. 235 North Main Street remained a single-family residence, and 202 North Main Street was at that time a filling station and garage. In 1996, a nuisance violation was issued to the applicant because he had not moved the cars back three years later. At this time, in 1996, three years later, that meant that 331 North Main Street had lost its non-conforming status. Therefore, 235 North Main Street remained a single-family residence, 301 North Main Street was vacant, and 202 North Main Street was a garage. Um, after the applicant received his violation notice in 1996, he submitted the request for a special use permit to operate the business at 235 North Main Street. And this was, um, approved by the Board of Alderman with an annual review requirement. I don't know if you can see, see this picture very well. This is what the property looked like in 1997. Um, the property was kept up very neatly. Put this back. Cars were lined up. A year later, at its annual review, the, the cars were not lined up, and the vegetation had started to grow. In 1999, after a nuisance, um, violation was issued, the Board of Alderman voted to revoke the permit. Therefore, in September of 1999, right after that, the applicant submitted an application for a special use permit to operate the business at 202 North Main Street. From 1999 until 2006, that is where the business was supposed to have been operating. Um, fast-forward to 2007, um, there was nuisance complaints from 235 North Main Street because of the vehicles. Um, the inspection from the building department showed that the cars were never moved to 202 North Main Street. Therefore, the applicant came into City Hall and applied for a special use permit to move the business back to 235 North Main Street. Um, this was approved, um, by an ad hoc committee that had gotten together for the Planning and Zoning Commission to put together stipulations and conditions that you should be familiar with by now. Um, and the Board of Alderman approved it with these stipulations. I believe that's in your packet. So, from 2008 to 2012, um, the business operated at 235 North Main Street with five annual inspections. Um, they passed inspection, um, with a few stipulations along the way for improvements. I don't know if you can see this, in 2009, um, this is an aerial photo of the property, which shows that the cars were not lined up and property neat as supposed to be, and that cars were being sold at 202 North Main Street. And this is the automobile graveyard at 331 North Main Street that was supposed to have been vacant. 2010, in the annual inspection, um, shows that the cars were lined up neatly, but there is still a lot of junk and debris around. Um, the applicant did agree to construct more fencing, which he has put up. The applicant did agree to construct more fencing, which he has put up. This is the fence from the point of view of the mill. As you can see, you cannot see into the property. This is on the other side of the fence. In February 2012, he was notified again of another annual review. These are some pictures that were taken then. And as you can see, there's a few more vehicles and a lot more debris on the property. It's not going anywhere. Hey, Shawna, would you fast forward that for me? At this time, while we were out there, we had also received a nuisance complaint about 331 North Main Street. So while we were out there, we also took pictures of that property, and you'll see those in a minute. When the review came before the Board of Aldermen, the Alderman gave him 30 days to extension, to come into compliance with his agreement. At that time, he did put up another fence so that the graveyard could not be seen from Main Street. And then in April of that same year, the Board of Aldermen issued his special use permit with more conditions and back to a six-month review. I want to stop it for a minute. However, the applicant decided he did not want to sign the agreement. He indicated he would rather relocate his business or apply for rezoning. He was advised that rezoning would not relieve him from the special use permit requirement. And he was given time to come into compliance and cease the operation. He was notified again in May that he needed to cease the operation or sign the agreement. Then again in October, he was given another violation notice and told to cease the business. In December, on December 3, no, December of 2013, the building inspector and the police chief went to make inspection of the property to see if the business was still being conducted. It was. Two days later, the city submitted a certified complaint to the city prosecuting attorney. A few days later, he, the applicant, received his citation and court summons. Two weeks after that, I believe it was, the applicant submitted another application for special use permit for all three properties. Okay, it still doesn't work. On February 13, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for all three properties, as I said. And I'll very quickly go through some of the zoning requirements of how we got to where we are as far as how we make a decision for zoning. C2 Central Business District is a special district that was originally constructed for the old downtown districts where businesses were traditionally mixed, and they were built close to the streets and where they often had a common wall. Unlike a C1 where they have a setback and they are usually on separate lots. If you look at the C2 uses, permitted uses, you'll notice it'll take you back to the See if I can get it to go. And as I said, in the other application, industrial uses from I1 are permitted in the C1 with a special use permit and with specific requirements. However, as we looked through the C1 and the C2 zoning, we could not find a use that described an auto body and repair shop. So we went to the I1 Light Industrial District to find it, and it still was not there. So we looked to the I2 Heavy Industrial, where we did find the automobile graveyard, but not a description for an auto body and repair shop. So when we can't find a use that fits into any of these zoning districts, we have to look at what is the best description for the use and how it fits in to the district with the other uses that are allowed. And we looked into the definition. We found the definition for an automobile graveyard, for a filling station, but the filling station said not including the repairing or replacement of motors, bodies, or fenders of motor vehicles or painting motor vehicles and excluding public garages. Under a commercial garage, any building or premises except those used as a private or storage garage, used for equipping, repairing, hiring, selling, or storing motor-driven vehicles. The term repairing shall not include an automotive body repair shop, not the rebuilding, dismantling, or storage of wrecked or junked vehicles. So the use that the applicant was requesting was specifically excluded from a commercial We felt, the staff felt that it did not meet the requirements of an I2 industrial use. It was not that much of a hazard, so we fit it into the I2, I'm sorry, the I1. And in coming to our decision, we looked at the requirements that's set out in the special These recommendations also require no less than a two-year period for the permit to be valid, that it has to be renewed at least every two years. In a C4 neighborhood commercial district, this was a new district that was adopted in St. Genevieve not too long ago, as I understand. The purpose for it was to revitalize this flood ravaged area, and it was to bring back the traditional businesses that were seen in historic neighborhoods. These businesses were to benefit the residents of the neighborhood for conveniences. And C4 has all the requirements of a residential district with the exception of these uses of businesses. And finally, I wanted to show you the nuisance ordinance for maintaining inoperable vehicles. This is an ordinance that the Police Department and the Building Department have to address on a pretty consistent basis. It should be unlawful for any owner or occupier of property within the city to allow an inoperable, damaged, disabled, wrecked, demolished, or unlicensed motor vehicle, or portion of such vehicle or junk to remain on the owner's or occupier's property for more than 14 days. And the tearing down, stripping, junking, storage, repair, or servicing of vehicles outside of a site-proved enclosure is prohibited unless such use is shown to be specifically authorized, permitted, or licensed under other ordinances of the city, or unless necessary repairs are being made by an owner to such owner's vehicle. It is difficult to enforce this type of regulation when there are other properties in town that are allowed to, by step, this ordinance. And that is the question that our office has been getting quite a bit, is why can some people keep theirs out and ours cannot? Are you awake?
One of your early slides said that city staff had determined that it did pose a fire hazard?
That it could pose a fire hazard.
Well, in your packet, you gave the board, from the Fire Chief's review, the stated December 10, 2014.
He did not know, feel that way. He did not feel that way.
We don't even have a good date on that. It's December the 10th, 2014. And the Fire Chief says that in his opinion, well, the proposed use substantially increased fire hazard, you have no. So how do you determine which staff is speaking?
This is the Building Department.
Your slideshow only was the Building Department.
That's correct.
So, but don't you think that's a little bit of a misrepresentation when you say city staff?
Yeah, I'm glad you pointed that out.
City staff actually said there does not pose a fire hazard.
When you look at all three properties, that was kind of a statement to cover all I shut it down.
Brenda, have you been on the property lately?
I've been on the property lately, not this year, no. I have been, of course, by 202 North Main, but I have not done a personal inspection.
It says no more than 10 disabled vehicles. When you're estimating, how many vehicles do you think are on the property?
Jimmy, how many were there when you did the inspection, December?
Forty-four.
Forty-four?
Forty-four.
Wow, wasn't there like a salvage yard? What was the name of that property, up back by the Cisco Building? Man, he had a lot of cars back there, too.
That was Warren Bloom.
Warren Bloom, yeah.
That was back in the 70s.
Well, they just moved them out. I mean, within the past decade.
Well, I think it was really Ed Baldwin's property, I believe, but...
Did he ever get any nuisances or demands or?
Who's that?
Warren Bloom.
I don't know one of them.
Yeah. Were the property owners back there when they had all those cars?
You mean Roy, yes, that's who I mean. Mr. Hoffman's.
Okay, well, see, there used to be one that...
Yeah, it's that way. Warren's is that way.
The river there, going back to the river there, there used to be a junkyard back there. I think that was Ed Baldwin's property. I don't know who really had the vehicles there, but...
I'd like to hear from Mr. Weiner.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're in history, twice a time, family, wasting the city's money. But it's moving. We're after a new special use permit, not the old one. We're seeing a new George Weiner, not the old one. Got new vices. Any questions?
George, what's going to be different about, what's going to be different?
I'm downsizing. I'm getting older. So far this year, I've held six away, and I sold probably six, so the numbers are down. And the numbers are going to continue to get down. As far as 40-something cars, that's not on one piece of property. That's, you know, I've got three.
And they're enclosed, they're behind the fences?
Yes.
Even the salvage on the other side of the...
Yeah, that fence over there. I had a lawyer come to town to review my case, and he accidentally found me on the street. He said, "George, where are you at? I can't find you." And he's a, used to be a citizen. I said, "I'm hidden. Move me, you'll find it."
And your neighbors have no complaints?
I brought them along this time. You want to hear them?
Hi, Janice Ward in 198 North Main. Right beside, I have the business, Stella and me. I've been there six years. George, I've been here for six years. I wouldn't have moved and put my business there if I felt that was going to be a deterrent of my business. I feel like I do a good business there. George doesn't in any way impact even the extra parking on the side streets there. I have, again, no complaints, no complaints with what I see every single day right beside me. There's no noise, there's no any of that type of thing. George is a good neighbor, as far as character goes. I would just, as a business standpoint, would, it kind of concerns me, I guess, some of the, I don't know, kind of the jabs or the, that he's getting from the city. You know, I think, when will be the next person? When will the next person have something come at their business because, you know, I mean, he's been there for how many years? I live in there six. I mean, who's to say that all of a sudden, one day, someone's not going to come to me and say, "My business isn't appropriate in this home because it used to be a residence." So, anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the one who is coughing, I'm sorry. My name is Dolores Boyd. I live at 222 North Main, which is right next door to 202 and across the street from 235. And I have a short statement. We have been George's neighbors for about seven years, living right next door to his garage on Main Street. George has proven to be an extremely considerate neighbor, keeping his business neat, contained, and noise-free. He has been in business a long, long time, and the Boyd family would be pleased to see him continue. He's been a great neighbor and an excellent friend, and I know he has worked really hard to comply with the restrictions and with the, I'm sorry, all of the things that have been placed on him. He's tried really, really hard to comply and has done a really good job.
Hello, my name is Joyce Schumaker. I have the business of art and antiques at 188 North Main Street, which is right beside Stella and me. George has been a wonderful neighbor. I don't notice any of the trash. I didn't know there was a junkyard there. As far as it impedes traffic, I think that was marked, the only thing that impeded traffic on North Main Street was the ice and the inability to get rid of it. He's been a wonderful neighbor. If you, you asked Brenda if she'd been down to check it out. Have you been down to check it out? Have any of you been there to look at it? Have you moseyed on down past George's house on Washington and made that curve and looked at that house that I have to look out my rearview mirror and see the trash and the junk that had sat there for three years? And you don't say anything to them, but you're picking on George? I don't understand it. I'm a newbie here, I'm new in this area, I'm trying to run a business, it hasn't conflicted me. I want to know if you've run him through all these ringers and what sections he's in, I'd like to know if you're doing the same thing with his competitor who happens to be Mr. Stupi. Have you checked on his? Is he in all the zoning? Is he correct? Or is this a problem of, I don't want George there anymore, so... Or is this a problem of, I don't want George there anymore, so let's pick on him. I want George as a neighbor. I want him to keep his business. We need all the business on North Main Street. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Shannon McBride, and I am the manager at the Main Street Inn Bed and Breakfast at 221 North Main. My friend Joyce is very passionate.
I am!
She is, she's passionate. George is a wonderful neighbor. I have lived here since July 1st. My mother owns the building and I run it, and my guests look out over his backyard behind his fence and say nothing negative about him. There's no smells, there's no nothing. He's incredibly neighborly to my guests, to me, to everyone around. He's always someone he'll stop and talk to, and he's a really lovely man. He also pays attention. If he has to do something that makes noise, he will walk out and see if I have any guests' cars in front and ask me if my guests are ever there, if I have anyone, and I, we always check and communicate with each other to see, and that's when he does his noisy stuff, which, to be honest, I'm like, I didn't even hear it when he came over and asked me. I didn't even hear the noise, so... And he has lovely properties, and his building is beautiful, and there's always people, Janice had mentioned this last time, and I wanted to mention it, that people stop by that come into town and take pictures in the front of his building with the really awesome gas tanks, which are so fucking cool. That's all, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Weiner came before the Planning and Zoning Commission on two different occasions and fully satisfied all the questions that the Planning and Zoning Commission had. Two, his neighbors appeared there as they've appeared here tonight. Obviously, they're in full support. Pretty hard to get neighbors to come out once, let alone twice. All the questions were answered, and there was a unanimous vote in favor of recommending approval for this S U P.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions or comments? We're still in the public hearing part. Anybody else in the audience like to address the board?
I'd like to say something, but you know what? There is other people in St. Genevieve that need to make a living, too. Not just the people that are involved, but the worst historic part of it. You know, there's common people like George, who's lived here all his life, you know, he's a good, or he's a blood donor, he's, you know, he's part of Main Street. I've owned the property over there, 331, for 40 years this year. I've worked on cars over there for 40 years. And I am getting a special use from that. But, you know, you guys do what you want to do. Do what you need to do.
How many citations have you got over the years, George?
Mainly just this last one.
And you, you couldn't abide by the citation?
We're going to court next week.
George, do you feel personally attacked?
I'm violated. Defamation of character, whatever's going on in the paper. I've stopped the best as little as I am, which I just, that was the first thing out of their mouth. What are you, you're criminal? I'm going to become criminal. It's next on the list. You guys need to remember what Coby Thornton done to Kirkwood City Hall.
Don't go there, George.
You brought it up, John.
I didn't bring it up, no. I just said, "Don't go there." That's... The only thing I want to do, George, tell the people what I told you two years ago at the auto auction.
Get the hell out of town.
No, I didn't. I told you, you need to sign that special use permit, correct?
Get your license.
No, 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 I said...
John, don't talk to me, okay?
Anything else for the public hearing? Okay, it is eight o'clock. We will close the public hearing, and we'll listen to a, a motion. Is motion to approve without any review? Was, did Planning and Zoning recommend any time...
Seven to zero.
Was there any timeframe on the, on the special use permit?
Two years.
Two years?
Second.
Second. We've got a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Uh, I get it as four yes and two no. Is that, is that the way, or do we need to do a roll call? Four yes, two no? Okay. So the motion approved. So special use permit's approved. Thank you all for coming. Brenda, appreciate your presentation and your history of everything. George, appreciate your patience on this and everybody's comments. It's appreciated. Thank you very much.
... All sleeping tortoises found out at this location. I haven't done nothing. Keep your own cash money, and we just know that guests...
No, I don't.
Um, let's go on with the, okay. Okay, approval of the amendments of the February 27th meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 2014-12, a resolution reappointing Joan Dunsey to the St. Genevieve Board of Adjustment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 2014-13, a resolution appointing Kathy Walts to the St. Genevieve Board of Adjustment. Get that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, old business, bill number 3968, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a three-year contract for the provision of cemetery maintenance service with K&amp;J Landscaping of St. Genevieve, Missouri, in an amount not to exceed $9,816.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwig?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Joker?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderwoman Brumfield?
Yes, if they're locked in for three years, do it.
Six yes.
Good practice.
Zero nos, two absent. Bill number 3968 now becomes ordinance 3907.
Okay, new business, bill number 3969, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a letter of intent between the City of St. Genevieve and St. Louis County and Municipal Police Academy for continuing education training for city of St. Genevieve police officers for 2014.
Move to approve.
Second.
Do you need a second reading once?
All right, we'll find out. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good, no.
He's out.
You got that, okay.
Can we just, can I make a motion for a second?
I, no, I forget.
Sorry, yes.
Do you need a second reading on this or not?
I'm sorry. You need a second reading on your training academy ordinance.
It's a resolution.
What's an ordinance?
No, it's an ordinance approving it.
Is it, is it, okay, then don't do it.
Don't do it, okay. Okay, uh, we are to the public comments. Anybody like to address the board? So, let's know.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Now, could you just give us your name? Could you give us your name first, please?
Gary Bursaw.
Thanks.
Resident of St. Jen up in 123 Crestview Drive. I have a little business down here at Spirit House, and I'm on your agenda tonight. I'd like to thank the city for the last couple of snows we've had. They've sent a truck down, they've cleaned our streets, and I'm proud of it, and thank you. I know there've been some complaints and some, you know, stuff about it, but the last couple of times, you guys have done a pretty good job. Thanks.
No, I, no public comments, we'll go to other business. We have an approval of a liquor license for Gary Bursaw doing business as Spirit House of St. Genevieve, 173 North Main Street, to sell and produce, manufacture wine on the premises at 173 North Main Street.
Gary Bursaw from St. Genevieve. Okay.
Are you going to be selling what you make, or...
Yes, ma'am. Okay, what I started out with the TTB, and I have a federal permit, that was the easy part. God, I had no idea what I was getting into here. But anyway, yes, I would like to make, what I'm going to do is make kit wines. A kit makes about 30 bottles of wine at a time. I'd like to produce that wine. At that point, I'll pay all my taxes, get my polo label and all my stuff done correctly. You know, Missouri's going to want 42 cents a gallon. I don't know what the feds are going to want, but, you know, there's going to be some money involved here. I know you guys are kind of, probably the most expensive license I'm looking at, to be honest with you, at the city. But, okay, and I have to have the city before the state will act, and the state before the county will act, so I'm kind of like jumping hoops here, trying to keep things going. But yes, ma'am, I've contacted the state. They tell me I have to have a buy-the-drink license because I am going to sell a bottle of wine and allow them to drink it on my premise. And that's why I need a buy-the-drink license. Otherwise, I would have tried to have gotten just a package, buy my wine, and hit the door.
Gary, how long have you been in business, though?
Uh, well, I started out at 291 Merchant, next door to the tavern there, but didn't like it there, so I moved down on 173, oh, right before August of this year. We're not making hands over fist, but we're keeping the doors, and I'm hoping this will improve our bottom line. I think it will be good for the foot traffic on Main Street. I think it will attract people down there, you know. I make a pretty good wine, I think, out of these kits. You guys are more than welcome to come down and sample a little bit of it. I'd be happy to have you come, you know, that'd be great.
Didn't you have an entry in the county fair?
Oh, yes, sir. One, two first place, two first-place medals at the county fair. And I don't know how big of a guy that is because I don't know how much competition I had, but, you know, but still, no, I've got two first-place medals.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm not ashamed of it. There it is.
You do beer, too, right, Gary?
Well, yeah, but I'm not...
Just the wine?
Just the wine's all I'm trying for, yeah. And that's a whole new brewery, that's a whole new license, a whole new thing with the feds. I mean, yeah, you know, each little license is a whole new thing. You want to get into spirits, then that's a whole new thing. You know, right now, I have applied and received from them my permit to be a winery to make and sell wine, okay? Kind of like the first hurdle. At that point, I came to see the city. They didn't realize, I don't think, that I was wanting to make the wine. They just thought I was wanting to sell it. So that was one license, but now I talked to Pam, I think it was, and we talked about what I was wanting to do, so now I think the license went up 300 bucks. But, you know, but it's what we want to do. We want to, my wife and I have just went to a St. Charles Winery Conference. She took the sommelier course and passed it, so I have a wine sommelier at my, in my store here now, and I took the best, of course. Tells you how to taste and smell, and all that stuff on the wine. So, yeah, we're interested in it and like the process of doing it and enjoy what we're doing right now. I'm retarded. I kicked around the house there for about a year, did everything I wanted to do around the house pretty well, so I'm starting to get bored. My wife said, "Why don't we..." We went to St. Louis to a place called Norm's Way, and then we bought our first kit, our first wine thing, and made that, and that's the one we won the first-place medal with. I told her it was either that easy or mine hogs on the darn acorn. I don't know which one. But anyway, from that point, it was the only place you could go, was Jackson, who was never open, or back to St. Louis to get supplies. So we decided we opened this little, we are right now currently a store. You can get anything, everything you need to make wine and beer. But we would like to start making our own and sell it.
Well, thank you, Gary.
And my motto is at Spirit House, if you leave without smiling, I didn't do my job.
All right, thank you.
I don't know if I give you guys a copy of my...
You don't, we don't need it.
I don't need it.
Somebody want to make them up?
I just said, "Move to approve."
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next is the approval of a temporary liquor license for Saturday, May 31st, for St. Genevieve Knights of Columbus, 600 East Market Street.
Motion to approve.
A second?
You'd have to have one. Is this outside?
It's outside.
Oh, okay.
The seats have nothing to do with it, it's just on their property.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and lastly, approval of a street closure for the St. Genevieve Community Center for a Night Glow 5K on Saturday, April 12th at 8:00 PM.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I was all for, sorry. One more. Approval of the use of a, of the Main Street Park for opening ceremonies of the Art of Women's Health 5K Run Walk on Friday, April 25th, and a street closure request.
Move to approve.
Second. Not an issue. Where the guard, uh, police chief? No issues with that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, anything else for the board? Not all. Entertaining...
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.